The copy? Okay, so I don't have one that's original. I've never got it. Alright, so did they not give it to you? You have the problem. Okay, so you need an original one? Oh, okay, okay. So, what about the?
Probably counts, I'm beginning to explain all that.
Do you need a magnifying glass?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, my law. We're joining the flag side. Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. Another area of individual who would look at justice to the law. Okay, I would, uh... You're getting a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting last week.
Second.
Any discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Did I hit anyone on the shin here as I come through?
Morning, Eric.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. Alright. Have a request here from a Noah Borntrager wanting to move a structure, an oversized load on, uh, down one of our highways or down one of our roads. Looks like they're wanting to go 188th over to Xavier and then over on 180th, it looks like, to Wagon. Very large, it's a house, fifty feet long, thirty feet wide, fifteen feet, six inches tall. Don't know on, this is the first one for me on this, so...
I don't know if we ever really issued permits. We used to catch a few of them doing it illegally, of course. We tried to stop them, but by then it was too late.
Right.
Now, during this process that you were looking at, far as the permit, is there a bond or anything they have to put up? If they tear up a bridge or anything?
Um... I believe there is. It states here the applicant will, shall submit certificate of insurance showing that the applicant has secured the appropriate insurance. And they have not submitted that yet, so... I would say, I just received this late yesterday afternoon, um, that we hold off on this permit till we have all of our insurance.
I agree.
A good idea.
Everything in place.
Very easily, a bridge could collapse and we want their money to fix it.
Absolutely. Absolutely, so...
Okay.
You might want to talk to Justin too, see if he needs to put up a bond.
Okay, alright. Didn't want to bring that. Uh, crossroad two, kind of go through our week last week with the rain and everything. We did get a crossroad two put in on Hackberry from, I believe it's 240th or 245th to 250th or 60th over there. It was in your area. But we did, it needed, needed done.
Is that the Almright Residence area?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yep. Cruiser, with all the moisture we've had and the freeze and thaw, we're seeing several potholes. We are out patching with cold patch. Have two individuals totally dedicated to, um, patching right now at this time, so you'll be seeing them out. Uh, we had a, due to all the flooding, or the heavy rains we should, I should say, and the flooding we recently experienced, we did have a very large tree on a low water crossing on 240th between Birch and Calvary. Received the notice of it over the weekend, got barricades put out, went, cleaned it up yesterday. In the meantime, somebody decided they needed our barricades and we no longer have the barricades, so anyhow. I'll let you know that. We talked on our flooding. Did finish the blast up at Beth Quarry last week. The blast is on our Facebook page, Bourbon County Facebook page, if anyone wants to see it. Really, really good blast.
It looked good, the video, the rock did.
Yeah.
How many tons did you get?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Alright.
It was around thirty thousand, I believe.
It's a good blast, from looking at the video.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, still finalizing with K Camp on our belly dump that we had the accident with. Hope to have that finalized maybe this week and, and, uh... Agree on the settlement and, I don't know, do I need to bring that to you to agree with, or is that... You want me to go ahead and finalize it, or how, how do you? It's the first one of these that I've...
So, so they give you all the comparatives on it?
Yeah, they gave us... For the tractor and the trailer, they...
Tractor and trailer, we had the comparatives and...
Yep.
And what the insurance company gave them. You think it's fair?
I, I think it is. I think Kendall, are you, no, okay, she's listening. I thought she was wanting to speak there. Yeah, I think it's very fair.
I, I saw the one on the truck. It's, of course Kendall emailed it out, I think, and just very good offer.
There's the trailer one.
Wasn't it? The truck was a 2009?
I believe...
Yeah, I think so.
I think so. Two thousand nine, yep.
This is a very good offer for that trailer, too.
I thought it was, too.
Yeah, so...
I'd recommend taking both of them, but...
Okay, yep.
I don't know if the commission needs to make that recommendation. We can leave that up, Derek, it's up to you guys.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. For the tractor was thirty-nine thousand, thirty-six dollars, twenty-three cents. For the trailer was thirty-five thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Now, once you receive this settlement, I'd like for you to share your plans, your thoughts...
Sure.
Or going forward, or you're placing this, replacing that.
Sure.
Just as, not as permission.
Right.
Just for me to know.
I would suggest also that, once you get that money, put it in your, um, machine and equipment trunk.
Yeah, special machinery.
Special machinery.
Because you had mentioned maybe a dump truck instead of a second belly dump, which is, that's up to you, so...
Okay.
Eric, can you get that? We need to set up a special account for that.
Okay.
Insurance proceeds.
Sorry here, making notes. Last thing I have here is, and I'll be touching on this probably every week for several weeks to come, but on our windmills, they did provide us with a map, and I will present whoever with the map. It's laminated, I don't know if you want to, it is the locations of the maps, um, are of the, the map of all the windmills. I don't know if you want to hang that in here, or what, what have you, so...
Is this room locked during the week, then?
What's that?
I say, is this room locked during the week?
I don't know.
Is it only open right now, like when we're here? Because I didn't, get a whole lot for the public to look at it.
Kendall, do you know, is this room locked, or is it open?
I think that's a good idea. Put it up and let the public look at it.
Right.
As opposed...
Put it, could put it out in the hallway, there you go.
That would be my recommendation.
Okay. Had a meeting while you were looking over that, just to let you know. Had a meeting Friday, I believe it was, Thursday, Friday, days are all run together. But anyhow, with, um, Apex and went over the road use agreement, paragraph by paragraph by paragraph. We are making sure that everything is followed and, uh, meeting specs and, and what have you, so...
Hey, your plan of operation, I think you told us that Mr. Fox is going to be involved in it?
Absolutely.
Will he do some daily inspections and then if you have questions, you'll bring you in or Frank?
Right, that's, that's how we're working it now. And, well, actually, I'll go through it right here.
Okay.
Yesterday, they started boring of the roads to be able to tell the depth of gravel that was in the roads. Todd Fox was actually on site with them, I asked him to be there so he could plot where everything was. And we'll also receive a lot of documentation and data from IEA, who is the contractor, and then Apex as well. And anyhow, Todd, Todd was there, there was a question, Todd made a call to me and then I went out and, and visited with him. And in the meantime, if I have a question, and I've done it several times this past week, made contact with Frank Young.
Good, good process.
We, we had some question on, on rock, and I think we're going to talk that here in a little while, so, but I did. I leaned very heavily
Good.
On Frank Young with his expertise as an engineer. And I, I just want to say, everyone is working very well together at this time, so...
Just don't tell Frank he's an expert.
Okay, alright, alright, I'll, I'll watch what I say there on that, so... But I did want to say Frank has been
Yes.
Exceptional.
Very valuable.
So, he's a phone call away. Anything for me from commission?
No, you, you pretty much addressed everything I text you about this week, so thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
And if I, I do, would like to touch on it. If I sometimes get several texts going at one time, and I don't always get your text right back, but I try to
Okay.
To get back with you as soon as possible on that.
Do you like the text method?
That's, that's awesome, yeah.
I forget, as old as I am.
Right, yes.
So, we're about done with the disaster flooding, flooding deal?
Right, the 2019 flood, is that what we're referring?
Right, 2019 flood.
Right, yeah. I think Will Olives is here as well.
Okay, he's going to talk about that later?
Uh, I think...
He's on there right now.
He's on there to join our, to...
Okay, good.
He and I'll share time here together, if you have time for that.
So...
Sure.
Slide over and... Will that Will come up?
Did you, uh, one, one question I, did you get that report that, that I had for up around Fulton, East of Fulton on Xavier? Low Water Crossing, was that any markings?
I don't know if, I'd have to go back and look at my notes.
East, East of Fulton on Xavier.
East of Fulton on Xavier. I've had so many this, this recent flooding. And that's one thing I do need to let you know, we have had quite a bit of washouts on our roads, so...
Yeah.
But we are, the guys are doing a great job. We're trying to get out and get things addressed the best we can.
When do you think you'll be crushing it best? Do you have it?
Uh, we're still, we were crushing yesterday, broke a belt, uh, getting the belt fixed today. I, I hope, uh, early part of April, and I know that's getting right on us, but we've got to get started making chips.
Yeah.
There's just no other way about it, so... And you said Xavier?
Xavier, East of Fulton.
East of Fulton.
Low Water Crossing. Gentleman said there was about five foot of, five or six foot of water ran through there. He, he thought we had some signs indicating that it was not the pass, not passable during flooding or something.
Alright, do you want to start on, or you want me to, or how do you want to?
I'll get her started.
Okay.
On, uh, this is, all this information is in, involves disaster number forty-four, forty-nine, Kansas. The, um, entire project actually began on May twenty-first of 2019 when the county, uh, had gotten five inches of rain. Rivers were out of their banks, kind of like what we have right now, at least it were. They're back in their banks now. But on June fourth, the state declared a disaster. We had PDAs conducted, preliminary damage assessments done. And that was done on June the fourteenth. The grand total out of all the categories, which were A, B, and C at that time, the grand total of damages were three hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-seven cents. Now, those are preliminary damage assessments, they're not exact. What I'm going to tell you now is exact. Almost two years of working beginning on May twenty-first. The rainfalls that we had, and this is one of the really, the barometer that the state looks at, began with that five inches of rain. Then in April, we had nearly four to six inches in the southeast part and six to ten in the northwest. During May, we had fifteen inches over the entire county and one-third of it in the southern part, up to twenty inches. Then in June, the county endured another six to eight inches. In the northeast corner, ten to fifteen inches. July had five to eight inches, and it was a swath through the center of the county. The northeast got eight to fifteen. So you can see, there's the reason why we needed to declare. And we did. Four categories out of the FEMA Public Assistance Program is what we addressed. The first one was the CAT A, which is debris. Needless to say, with all the rain, it had washed all this material into, up against the bridges, which would inevitably cause damage. From the county, there was three hundred and twenty-nine cubic yards of debris, which weighed sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty pounds. It was all delivered to the landfill and it was burnt there. The total bid for the contract was thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars. Now, CAT B is what they call emergency protective measures. That's for doing labor for the roadblocks, paying for roadblocks, purchases of any other type of protective type equipment. That was five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. CAT C, that's for your roads. CAT C had, we had two hundred and thirty-one sites with three hundred and seventy-three individual projects. I took almost six hundred pictures of all the damage in the county. Had nineteen, nineteen days, nine-hour days taking these pictures. Then I had to take and record those on a map and then move from there to Google Earth. I registered nineteen hundred and fifty miles, uh, mileage on my vehicle and identified the damage starting on June the fourth, all the way to July the nineteenth. Multiple scheduled meetings that I had with the state and, needless to say, directly with the Public Assistance, uh, manager, I'm going to call him that. The total road damage was three hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. With what we get back from the state and from FEMA is eighty-five percent of that, which is three hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventeen cents. Now, there's two projects still yet. CAT Z, which is administrative cost, we're looking at about eighteen thousand dollars. There's one more project because of some delays and some things that held up this program. This is in regards to culverts. Now, needless to say, they look at all this, these projects with a fine-tooth comb, okay? And you have to have labor records, you got, I mean, all kinds of nice, wonderful stuff that's kept in road and bridge. Thanks to Eric and Jennifer, they're the ones that dug that all out. So now, what we're looking at is, this is the grand total for the entire projects, all of those put together. This will be money coming towards the county, three hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and sixty bucks. Now, that doesn't include the culverts and that does not include, uh, any other items that are still out there, but this is definitely what we're staring at as far as dollar figures. Any questions?
So, uh, what do you, wouldn't you anticipate to have this thing wrapped up?
Still, you know, everything revolves around getting data.
Right.
Okay? Time sheets and all that. Since Eric's been on board and definitely Jennifer, the ice storm that we had, that we declared, they started tabulating. When the water started coming up, they started tabulating. That is what's important. You cannot wait this long because it takes this long to get your money two years later.
Right.
Okay, but it's there. You just, it just takes time, okay? There's nothing, the only thing left right now is reviewing the culvert program. And then we have to submit the administrative cost, which is basically my time spent in the field, which I've tabulated right here. And how many hours you spend, you know, just once again, a lot of paperwork, a lot of figures, okay? But when you're staring at almost four hundred thousand dollars coming in the door of money that we are entitled to, there's other counties like Lynn County that's been over a million dollars, okay? Allen County, and I think they're working on Anderson County right now. So you can see how long this process, but it was a massive disaster. This wasn't something that was little bitty. And, but, once we start, once damage starts to occur in the roads and all this kind of stuff, Eric and I have gotten a schedule figured out that we have our grader operators identifying all the bad spots. Another thing, this does not touch on mitigation projects that we can still do, okay? And they, they say, they being public assistance branch from the state of Kansas, any place that we put, I think was it a hundred thousand?
I don't recall off the top of my head.
I, I don't have the figure in front of me, but certain amount of gravel that you have to replace in a certain area. And they look at everything by the length, okay, of the project. They look at it like, how much gravel have you put down in this certain area? And if you, if you put down a certain amount of gravel, then they encourage mitigation. And they will send somebody out to, to basically walk through that with us so it's not something that we're just, you know, out there just doing, and then all of a sudden it's done wrong, okay? We will get guidance on that. Eric, do you have anything to say?
I, I would like to touch, you asked on the culverts. I hope that we have that submitted and, and know an answer within a month. It would be my, um, thought on that, time-wise. I, I would like to touch again on what Will did say. Jennifer Hawkins needs a big thank you because she spent hours upon hours searching through files, looking for time sheets, looking for documentation, looking for data, so we could, uh, turn this in and submit the information. So, a, a big thank you to her as well.
Do that. It was very time, I mean...
Yes, very.
So, with getting this, uh, when we get this money, or even part two, we're guaranteed we'll, we'll get it. We might want to think about what we can use it toward.
Right, um...
I know we've had a discussion...
Just off the top of my head, I would throw at you, maybe we consider setting it back and, uh, and looking at some bridges or things like that, so we have matching funds and maybe look at going after some grants and, uh, seeing what we can come up with on grant-wise and know that, that we have money set aside for our matching funds to, uh, to repair these. That's just a thought, I don't, something I'm just throwing out off the top of my head right here. Something to definitely think about, so... Anyhow, any questions for us?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You have a spare mine?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike, you want one?
No.
Are you Patrick?
Yeah, how you doing?
Good, I thought that was you.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah, it has been. I'm just hanging out.
Trying to stay dry.
Yeah.
Okay, Laura. Okay. I have found what we thought last time was the map. I was wrong. But this time I'm not. I found nineteen eighty-nine reappraisal map. I am now the master of the MyLARS. Here is the nineteen eighty-nine reappraisal map for the commission. I figured you might want to put it up on the...
I don't have any.
Wall. Going to give one to Eric. Uh, I've already told, talked to Eric about it. I'll have it in my office. It also matches up with the paperwork, um, back in, um, the final, that affair says, some final work was done in January sixteenth of nineteen eighty-nine. The final MyLARS were finished up in March of, um... Excuse me, I had a tabby there, so I looked at January thirteenth of nineteen eighty-nine, where they went over the final phases of the reappraisals and they were making up the maps. So this is the latest of our reappraisals. So, this is where I think most of our maps have come from in the past. And I think this is where anybody has ever gotten any maps from. This is where it has come from. This is the last reappraisal maps that the appraiser's office works from. There's not any newer maps that they've ever, when they would work from their blue lines, like when Fern was here, she would map out, um... property and when splits were done, now it's done all digitally. But when she would actually map it out and splits and all that, they worked off of maps from MyLARS. And this is the one of the whole entire county. And then they broke them off individually into township section ranges. So this is the last one.
Well, with that said, you've still got some updates to do to this map from, from your research?
From this map, we need to update the road record map that's in my office. And then there's some work that's going to have to come from you guys.
Yeah, and that's, where I come in, on Friday, I'm going to be in Ms. Holder's office going over some, you know, gremlins from even back in the nineteen fifties, um, from forward, so I'll go in and research those. She's pulled out sixteen different parcels out of, I mean, that's not bad, actually, from all the years that we've been doing this, so... Well, I'll look at those sixteen parcels, hopefully get it pared down to less than that. And once we get that down, I'll come back to you all and kind of give you the skinny on what we think is happening. I've been... I've been in contact with KAC with regards to a couple of the parcels and some of the roads, and so, once we get all the information that we need, I'll come back and talk to the commission about it.
Well, I know it's been a, a long process.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm glad that we actually got into it to where, where we've come to a final, basically a final point.
Yeah.
And have, and have a decision on, on what roads are, are actually valid.
And then update this.
And update that.
With the road record book.
Right. So, once you get that done, we'll probably have new maps made up?
Oh.
For, for, you know, like our little folded maps, and a new one on the wall?
Yes, and Shane has been ordering, um, Central Publishing kind of quit doing it, and, um, I guess the main owner had gotten really, really sick, um, but Shane had just reached out and found another company that we think we can, um, do that through.
Okay.
So.
Great.
So, I think that's, by finding this milar.
Give that.
I think that it is, and the appraiser's office has decided that they don't, I now have the key to it, and so I'll be responsible for the last.
So you are the one-stop shop for it.
Yeah, I've got, I've got ahold of them now, too, so I've got all maps, I guess.
That's great.
Now, to share with me the, the process, why are you so confident in this eighty-nine map? It was just a reappraisal, was there really people on the ground looking at those roads, plus the deeds at that time?
Yeah, I can, I can talk about what happened on that level. I mean, legally, what, what occurred is there was actually, um, we believe pretty strongly there were hearings, you know, they had public interaction, things like that. It was a total revamp of, of the system, and so it was done for basically nine-one-one.
Okay.
And so when that was done, I mean, obviously, they went through the process to find out what was open, what wasn't open. We still have, you know, some gremlins, but it's not anywhere close to where we were two years ago, and we've really pared it down, and we got to send some letters out. You know, unfortunately, some people have come and contacted us because, you know, those roads are not officially open. And everyone has the right to petition the commission to open or close a road. There is a procedure legally to go through that, Kendall's got that information in her office that they can, you know, call her and talk to her and start that process if need be. Okay, thank you.
It, it started in like eighty-six.
Right.
And the one before that was in the sixties.
Okay.
What did I do? I think I had the minutes pulled out from that, that time all the way up to ninety?
Yes, and I had went back and, and.
And you went back and you were.
I had a stack about like.
That thick.
That thick. And in here, it talks about them, um, and when they did the reappraisals, they went over to Allen County Community College, because they had sent out letters, and it talks about that in here, about anybody that, um, during the reappraisal time, um, about the mapping was completed, and, um, the progress and, and the final mapping and, and stuff like that, and then we get to the, the final adapting of it.
I'm glad we're getting this far.
Yeah, it's, it's been a long process without Ms. Holder, it just wouldn't have happened, so.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, I'm going to add on Greg Vanderburg. Vanderburg, do we have, we don't have, do you have trouble with, there it is. We're going to be talking about the bond refinancing. Hey, Greg, Lynn O'Hara.
Good morning, Lynn.
Good morning. So, we have you on, on the speakerphone, and Greg is, is from Raymond James, and he is in responsible for getting together of the information for the bond refinancing for the Sosser District, and I've invited him here today to, to speak on that subject and let us know what the process is and, and where we go from here. So, Greg, go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you, and good morning, everyone. As many of you probably remember, we just recently completed a refinancing of the series twenty fifteen bonds for the county, and the twenty fifteen bonds with the general obligation sales tax bonds for the law enforcement center project. Those bonds are paid primarily from the sales tax revenue associated with that law enforcement center project, which is part of the reason we had to separate the refinancing of the twenty fifteen bonds from this proposed refinancing this morning that we'll be talking about. Uh, but the results of that prior refinancing, we were able to lock in the savings of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, and we reduced the interest rate from about three-point-two-three percent to one-point-eight-one percent. That issue had fourteen years left on the repayment with a final payment in the year twenty thirty-five, and we knew when we were working on the refinancing of the twenty fifteen bonds, that the county had a couple of other outstanding issues that might make sense to refinance. Primarily, it was the twenty twelve A and the twenty twelve B, uh, general obligation bonds of the county, and the twenty twelve A and B bonds financed sewer district improvements, and the bonds are payable first from assessments levied inside of that sewer district, and then ultimately backed by the full faith and credit of the county. Again, since it had a, a different source of revenue from the twenty fifteen bonds, we needed to separate the refinancing and complete it as a separate series of bonds. And so, um, the opportunity that's available on the, the series twenty twelve A and B bond refinancing would be to, to complete it or sell, very similar to what we did for the twenty fifteen bonds, a, a series of general obligation refunding bonds, and then take the proceeds, and we can immediately pay off the twenty twelve A and, and B bonds that were placed with the USDA, and you would begin making payments on the, the new bond issue. One of the things that we have looked at pretty closely and for other cities and counties in Kansas, uh, when we're refinancing a USDA issue is, USDA has some fairly strict parameters in terms of the repayment period. A lot of projects are completed with a forty-year repayment, which is a little longer than we would use typically when we have a public offering of bonds. So the, the twenty twelve A and, and B bonds have scheduled the final payment in twenty fifty-two, which again would have been a forty-year repayment. We've looked at a couple of different scenarios in terms of refinancing this. Do we keep the, the final payment in the year twenty fifty-two? Do we consider shorting it up to say a twenty-year repayment from where we're at currently, which would shorten the repayment schedule, you know, by about eleven years, if we were to do that? In, in the scenario that we ran, shortening the repayment period, we end up with a savings of about one hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred fourteen dollars, and that would take the interest rate from two-point-seven-five percent currently down to about a two-point-one-nine percent interest rate. Um, and again, it's a, a little bit longer issue than we completed for the law enforcement center. That was about a, a fifteen-year issue. The scenario that we're looking at here would be a twenty-year repayment, potentially, and so the interest rate, again, on the refinancing we completed earlier this year, was about one-point-eight percent for fifteen years. This would be about two-point-one percent for a twenty-year, um, issue. One of the key things, though, that we want to make sure we explore with the county is making sure that we don't end up with a mismatch between the sewer dis- district assessment revenue coming in and the amount of the bond payment, so that could have an impact on the repayment period and the annual debt service that we would have on the, the refinancing. But the, the process that we go through for completing a bond refinancing on this opportunity would be very similar to what we did earlier this year. The first step from the county, uh, commission perspective is to consider adopting an authorizing resolution, um, and as you may recall, that doesn't obligate you to complete the refinancing or, or accept the results of the refinancing, it just gives us permission to work with the county, and then also get Warren Bell as your bond attorney to pull together the legal documents, um, go through the process of having a bond rating assigned, and then that puts us in a position where we can move forward with the sale of the refunding bonds whenever appropriate. The schedule that we were looking at would be that if you, um, take action today to authorize the moving forward and preparing the refinancing, then that would put us in a position where we could finalize the sale of the refunding bonds, lock in the savings, and then bring that back to you at a, a county commission meeting, um, you know, on or about April thirteenth, and then we would have a closing of the bond refinancing in, in late April. And obviously, if interest rates move against this, or we need to delay the sale of the refunding bonds, we have a lot of flexibility to do so, uh, but that's a, a timeframe that would, would work well for where we're at, and then the, the steps that we would have to go through to, to finalize that savings. Yep, so again, the, the action that would be, uh, be, you know, required in the commission is, is something that you want to go forward with, the, the first step would be just to simply give us permission to start working on it, and, um, that would be in the form of adopting that authorizing resolution. So I'll, I'll stop there and be happy to answer any questions.
Susan, you got any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Bancroft, I'm the business director for the county, and.
Yes.
I was, you said something about the assessment mismatch. What will the annual payment be?
Um, it will depend on the repayment period.
Okay.
And, and, so, you know, the, the twenty-year scenario, the payment would end up being around forty thousand dollars per year.
Okay.
Um, and that may be, and if that ends up being too tight in terms of where the assessments are levied and the amount of revenue coming in, then we may want to look instead of a twenty-year repayment, maybe a twenty-five-year repayment. Um, and, and so that's still the part that we need to work through with the county, is just making sure that if we want to pay this off as quickly as we can and take advantage of the lower interest rates, that we don't create a, a burden on the, um.
The county.
Assessment.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, on the county or the, even the, the property owners inside of the sewer district.
Yeah. Um, so I'm also the finance director at the city, so I have a pretty good idea of what we're paying. We're, we're, we're paying about twenty-five hundred dollars a month, or that's what we're collecting, and so the, about thirty thousand dollars a year is what the, the county is getting. So.
Okay.
You know, you might go ahead and look at that twenty-five-year option, because I do not think the, I mean, we would have to go to the district to see if they would even be willing to pay more, to pay it down quicker.
Yeah, and, and that's the piece of information that we, we didn't have yet in terms of if there are scheduled or set amounts of the assessments levied against the property owners in the district, and then if that is a, on a per lot basis, or, you know, if that can fluctuate in terms of the number of, of assessment payers inside the district, so.
It's.
That, that will all have a, a big impact on the repayment period for the bonds, and then also the, the savings as a result of the refinancing.
And I can get you some information on that. I probably need to look and see if there's any cash buildup, because when the, when this project started, um, the residents had the option of paying a lump sum upfront versus having the assessment every month, and so.
Okay.
And I don't know if there, there's dollars, I'd have to review the accounts here at the county. But I can get all that information over to you. And then you also said about getting the bond, getting a bond rating. Didn't we just go through that? Would it be recent? Would it be recent enough?
I don't know how involved that gets, I think Greg will speak to that also.
Yeah, because, the only reason why I ask that is because it's so expensive to have those bond ratings done. Would they be willing to allow to use that same rate?
Yeah, and, yeah, exactly, and that's the very question we had as well. I mean, we wouldn't want to incur the expense of a rating unless it paid for itself in terms of better results on the refinancing. And we have, um, we just went through the rating process on the twenty, twenty-one A bonds which refinanced the law enforcement center, and so Standard and Poor's is willing to kind of simplify that process, and, um, and, and so we, we don't have to go through the, the, the rating call and a lot of additional information, especially since this is just a refinancing. So we know we'll have a, a lower rating expense, and we'll have a much more simplified process, and we looked at, um, a non-rated bond issue versus a rated bond issue to determine which approach would result in the most savings, and the, the rated approach does actually end up, even after you pay the cost of the rating fee, it does end up saving more than, than selling this as a non-rated bond issue.
Okay.
And the other thing that we had explored, uh, just to see if it might be a possibility, given the small size of this issue, was, um, even doing a direct placement of the bonds with, you know, one institutional investor or, or one bank, and we just didn't get any, any banks that would be interested. Typically, you know, if you're at a ten or fifteen-year repayment, then you have a lot higher success rate on a direct placement basis, and I think here, if we're looking at, you know, twenty, twenty-five, or even thirty-one-year repayment, it, it, it's tough to get a bank interested in a long repayment period for a direct placement issue, so the rating seems to make sense, and it's going to be, you know, a, a lower cost than what we paid earlier this year and a simplified process.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
So along with that, we have a resolution that he was talking about to, to allow Raymond James to proceed without any, incurring any cost at, at this point.
Okay.
So if, if we, for an agreement to proceed, I need to make a motion to adopt that resolution.
I'd make a motion to adopt a resolution for Raymond James to proceed.
Resolution number?
Oh.
Fifteen twenty-one.
Fifteen twenty-one.
So, your second?
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Nope.
And, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, the other part of that is, uh.
Sorry, Jim, I had a head now.
Is the S and P rating?
You're doing business there.
Okay, Craig?
Yes.
So on the S and P rating, uh, would you have, would you, when will you know what method of the S and P rating, uh, they will use? A full-blown S and P rating or a modified S and P rating?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think we'll, we'll end up with the, um, we'll, we'll have, what I'm expecting is the same rating that was assigned to the issue earlier this year, so we'll have the full benefit of that same bond rating.
Okay.
Um, but I, I have, I have had some initial conversations with S and P about the process, and, and it's going to be a much more simplified process, and so, um, we should be able to have the rating available to us probably in, in seven to ten days is what I expect.
Okay, so I, I have a letter somewhere that I just received for, there it is right here, for us, do we need to sign or put an X by the spot for the. Radio, S and P global rating engagement letter?
Exactly, yeah, S, S and P just needs your permission to move forward with the rating, and so you don't necessarily have to sign that rating letter, but if you can respond to that email and just check the box that says the county is ready to proceed, then that's all S and P would need to go ahead and, and release the rating.
And I have it here in front of me, so I'd need a, a motion to agree to, uh, move forward with the S and P rating engagement letter.
Make motion to move forward with the S and P engagement letter that Lynn has in front of him.
I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Very good. I think that wraps it up, Greg.
Okay, well, thanks, everyone. Have a good day.
You too.
Thank you.
Bye.
I'll get this taken care of here in a minute. Let's go ahead and continue on. Patrick Clift.
Hi, I'm Patrick Clift. I'm with Nelson Cordes. I had touched base with, turn the microphone to you.
Thank you.
There we go. I had touched base with Eric, you rode in bridge on Thursday, I got ahold of him. Just to run down, on Monday, I'd heard from IEA, this is in regards to the, to the rock you guys are putting on your county roads on the Jayhawk Wind Farm. IEA had gotten in touch with me on Monday about the rock we produce is AB1, that's the purchase order they gave us, that's what we provided for the entire project out of our Porterville location on Blake Reeds property. And they let me know on Monday that, that somewhere in the works, communication, Bourbon County was looking for a less fine material, SS5 material, I think is what they ended up choosing. So I've kind of felt obligated to show up and at least try to explain our AB1 product in hopes to maybe sell you guys or sway you guys on it. Anyway, they let me know on Monday, I was out of town on spring break with my kids, so I called Eric, got ahold of him on Thursday, I forwarded him our gradation on AB1, you guys, may already know this, and he forwarded it on to the engineer, he emailed me back and said it was still too fine of a material to be approved, and got back into town, I'm like, well, I feel obligated to come talk to you guys about it, so that's what brings me here anyway.
So Eric attended a meeting with Jayhawk Wind and also working with Frank, you know, the engineer, and I think he's also worked with the state on some of the specifications.
Sure.
I really haven't delved into it enough to understand it a lot, but Jim and I have worked together for many years and discussed gravel away from AB1 up to the SS5.
Yeah, well, you know, certainly I can understand Patrick's concern here, you've got a pile of rock out there, but if Eric and our engineer wants SS5, that's what we need.
So I had a little conversation with Eric this morning, and he added a conversation with the state also.
And I do want to point out, they can still use the AB1 on the private roads out in the field, so it's not that-
And entries?
And, and there are entries and things like that, but on our roads, we want KDOT spec SS5, ran that by the, our engineer, and that's, that's, that's just where we're at on our roads.
Yeah, and I appreciate-
Certainly is Eric's call.
Right. I appreciate that, and I don't want to step on any toes, it's just from our company perspective, we-
Absolutely.
They asked us to have it on the ground in middle of October, and so we're pot committed, give or take, on the, on the purchase order they signed us. The only, the only thing, I don't know if it'd be you guys, I know you're set on SS5, the AB1 would probably be, well, I, it would be a lesser expense for the project itself, it'd be a shorter haul, I don't know if that'd give you guys leverage if you had, if you had any interest at all at using it, it might give you leverage to give more depth possibly, and it may not, I don't know, but.
And this rock's been a hold by the contractor, correct?
Correct, everything's by the contractor. The only thing that we are dictating is the amount of rock that's on the road, that's, that's our only-
And the type.
Pardon?
And the type.
And the type, yes, sorry, and the type. And that's called out in the, in the bid, or in the IFCs or what have you.
And the road use agreement.
And the road use-
Tom, about the thickness of the road, too, that's important to the public.
And the thickness is any, we're calling out, and there's a little bit of a discrepancy between four to six inches, but our specs say six inches, I think in the plans it may be four inches, we're still working this all out, back and forth, as a matter of fact, after my time when I was in the back room reading emails, but we, we went out core-drilled, some areas are as thin as one inch on the road to up to three inches, so, but at the finished product per our road use agreement, there will be somewhere between either four to six inches of gravel on the surface.
And my understanding from your conversation with the state is their specs call for SS5 on a cap?
Right, right here on, if you bring up the KDOT's aggregates for surfacing or sub, subgrade modification for county secondary roads is SS3, SS5, SS7, and then the AB is for their subbase or what have you, and, and that's just-
Microphone on?
And our engineer, I've had multiple conversations.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I understand, I, I understand, I appreciate where you guys are coming from. The SS5, it would be a fairly simple material for us to produce down there at our Porterville, our location down there. It's just, we don't have time, because we bid the concrete rock out of our Fort Scott location, so our crew, just, if we had have known about it a week or two earlier, we could have produced the SS5. It's just, it's just unfortunate that the communication timing frame, so, but the AB1, it's a, it's a pure limestone product, it's a hundred percent, it's a, every, every ounce shot down is in that pile, there's no other product pulled off of it, so it's a hundred percent pure limestone. It's the Bethany Falls ledge, which is really hard rock, really low absorption, really good quality stuff, that's what's on the ground out there. So, anyway, that's kind of what brought me here, I just felt obligated, I should-
Appreciate you coming, I know we had our meeting, when was our meeting? With Jake, with the, you had two meetings?
I've had multiple meetings, the last meeting I had was Friday, last Friday, and we went, I believe it was Friday-
About a week?
When, or Thursday, maybe it's Thursday or Friday, I, I got my dates, but we, we went through every one of the line items, and I know we were in conversation, text and phone calls, emails, and I did send off your sieve test or what have you to our engineer, and, and he came back, we really want to go with our SS5, we stay away from as many fines as we can to keep the dust down the best we can, to have a good aggregate on our road at the finished product, because there's going to be a lot of, lot of traffic out there on the road, so that's where we're at.
I, I understand, I know AB3 is used pretty widely, to make AB3, we add fines to it, because AB1 has no fines added to it, it's actually less, less fine material than your typical AB3 on your typical county road, I would, I would think. But, that being said, it's just, it's still got fines in it, so I guess that's kind of where it's at, so.
And, and did you say you had a contract in October to make this, or did I misunderstand?
Yeah, they, I originally started speaking with them in September.
And who is them?
IEA.
IEA, okay, do you know who, who you were speaking with?
Wes Daring was who I spoke with.
Wes Daring, okay.
And he's the one that gave the paperwork to proceed, we moved our plan in, they wanted rock on the ground by late October, we were crushing on October 19th, I believe, and we crushed all the way through 2020, and with the delays and all that, they had, well, they actually haven't held any rock out of there yet, but it's getting close, I think.
Right, I, I don't know if there was any contract signed back then or not, I don't know on who, who they might have, whether anything had even been decided.
Between IEA and Apex.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I know we didn't get our plans till, I'd have to look at the exact date, but it was just a couple weeks ago, so I don't know when contracts were signed, if they even had a contractor, contractor then, so.
No, I think, I think you're accurate there.
That may, may want to have that conversation with Wes or what have you as well, so, okay, all right.
All right, thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Second point of work, can I do a second?
Sure. You've had-
I heard you talk about half inch, or chips, that same quarry, that same Porterville location, we've got 6,000 ton of a clean half-inch chip, if you guys ever get in a tight spot.
Awesome.
That, uh-
We do.
You're needing the chip and seal.
Okay.
We gave quite a bit to Allen County, not gave, we sold some to Allen County last-
We have it on record as saying gave. Everybody here has, we, we got that recorded.
I can't make no difference.
Gave, we, we were not that same treatment.
We have no half-inch chips.
What size, what size are you calling the chips?
It's a half-inch down to quarter-inch screenings.
Price?
Price.
Cost.
Sold it to Allen County for $7 and they loaded it.
They loaded it.
Yep.
Very good.
All righty.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Truly unfortunate for them, but.
I agree.
Sorry for my being a couple minutes late this morning, I was at the first horse building this morning, getting a shot, so life is good.
Second one or first?
Second one. They want the courts to open back up again, which is good, I think. I need to go in with Susan, myself and the three commissioners, something's come up this morning on a personnel matter under KSA 75-4319B1, to discuss personnel matters of individuals, unelected personnel to protect their privacy rights, this is multiple medical issues with some employees, so we need to go in and have that discussion, it's probably going to take seven minutes.
Henry, turn back to this room.
At 10:08.
At 10:08?
Yes.
So moved? Go ahead, so moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The three commissioners, myself and Susan.
Okay, three, got that. Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Dean. It's only just begun. Don't fool with me, Lynn, you'll sue me, I know.
Okay, just remember, we're on, we're here on, still, I like the city where they turn it on.
So who is it that you wanted to talk bad about again?
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just, do my little public service announcement here.
See, I have my clipboard all ready.
Is this for real?
I'll leave, I'll leave so it's not in the paper.
I'll let you know in a second.
Okay, so, when you use the word incumbent, who do you mean? I mean, oh, I don't need to know their names, I need to know, is that anybody that's on?
Okay, he's on there now.
Okay, well, I knew that, but at the same time, I was just a basic definition of incumbent, you know, does that mean-
Currently holding the office.
Then, oh, so it doesn't matter whether they were just elected or been on there for twenty years.
Maybe, but I say throw them all in together so you can help.
Okay.
Thank you for calling. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. How it sounds today.
I mean, we're not many more, it's good. Come on, that's come so many.
You're right.
I don't know. I thought starting, I want to say, but I don't know. It's not like it's visited, but I don't know, wasn't it supposed to have a training today?
I think it's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow. Maybe it's the 24th or something.
Yes.
Okay.
Right? Yeah. It's tomorrow, I wasn't sure, I'm not sure. Ten to 11:30 or something.
Is it here?
In this room.
You're supposed to bring it up on, on the, on the-
Is there a agreement?
That's what I understood, it comes from the state that way.
No, anybody can attend that, in my understanding.
It's not just for the commission.
How?
It's just a possible.
Well, it is for satisfaction of their technical violation.
Yeah, because if they don't do that, then they'll have to pay a fine.
Right.
As part of the, you got trouble if he slap you on the hand, I think if they don't pay you, it's, it's to be all a fine free, you know.
Well, any new commissioner, see that they're supposed to complete the training within nine days?
Yes.
So we have three public officials that have not yet completed the training.
Yeah. Which are required to do that.
How long is the training? Half and a half. He's going to be, Michael Phillips, he's from the Attorney General's Opinions Division, and he's going to conduct it.
I got to talk to him on the phone, long time ago now.
Maybe he's been here one time, conducted training at his college.
I don't think they have, normally when you get to commissioners or new public officials period, they normally have a training at State level someplace, but due to COVID, they're probably have postponed those or have had that.
They must have, Kennedy's gonna use that.
Yeah. Once we get to the COVID, they go back to normal and they'll be required to go up to the training.
This makes sense.
I know, I know, it's just physics. I wanted to double check because I've had that. And that's, okay, that's all.
Yes, but thank you.
Just in trade last time.
No, I'm going to talk about that now.
Well, I'm one of the students.
Yeah.
Coming out of the session at 10:08, back into this room.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I move that we resume normal commission meeting.
And, and no action from that.
No action from the, from the executive session.
We've got two-
If you're second?
Sorry.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
I have two other issues, I just want to update you all on the tax sale, you know, obviously, the title company has been very busy, which is a good thing for the commission, that means the properties are selling within the, in the Bourbon County area.
You're right.
It's not like it's intended, but I don't know. Wasn't it supposed to have a training today?
I think it's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow. And it's the 24th or something.
Yes. Right? Yeah.
Tomorrow, I wasn't sure. I'm not sure.
10 to 11:30 or something.
Is it here?
In this room.
You're supposed to ring it up on.
Remember this ringing?
That's what I understood. It comes from the state level. Now, anybody can attend that, in my understanding.
It's not just for the commission. It's just a puzzle.
Yeah, it's over.
Well, it is for satisfaction of their technical violation.
Yeah, because if they don't do that, then they'll have to tip on it. As part of the. You got trouble if he slap you on the hand. I think if they don't pay any of these, it's to be all fined free.
Well, any new commissioner, see that they're supposed to complete the training within nine days?
Yes.
So we have three public officials that have not yet completed the training.
Yeah. But you're required to do that.
How long is the training?
Hour and a half. He's going to be your Michael. I think his name is Bill. He's from the Attorney General's opinions division. And he's going to conduct it.
I got to talk to him on the phone. Long time ago now.
Maybe he's been here one time, conducted training at his college.
I don't think they have the. Normally when you get to commissioners or new public officials period, they normally have a training at state level someplace. But due to COVID, they probably have postponed those or haven't had that. Once we get to the COVID, they go back to normal and they'll be required to go up to the training. This makes sense.
Justin, training was 10 to 11?
No, I'm going to talk about that now.
Well, I'm going to just do.
Yeah.
Coming out of executive session at 10:08, back into this room.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I move that we resume normal commission meeting.
And, and no action from?
No action from the, from the executive session.
We've got two.
Second?
Sorry.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
I have two other issues. I just want to update you all on the tax sale. You know, obviously, the title company has been very busy, which is a good thing for the commission. That means that properties are selling within the, in the Burman County area. We do have 30 parcels that are ready. We were contacted by Travis Shelton. I was yesterday. There was a, one of the properties that we were hoping to sell on the tax sale did have a, a fire incident. So I basically informed the chief of police that the county would be the victim because there's no heirs. It's one of our properties that we knew were going to have to, at some point, somebody's going to have to hire a counsel to clear the title. But just kind of let you know that we did get contacted on that yesterday. I do want to wait till we get about 50 parcels before we file because of publication issues. I don't want to just publish for 30 parcels. I'd rather have, you know, more to do than, than, because it's just, it's almost the same cost. So it's a matter of, I don't want to publish 10 times. So I'm trying to get a, a number built up. But it's just a matter of the title company being able to fit us in when they can. So. But it's, it's a great, great reason for delay. I don't think Burman County has ever experienced this type of housing market. I've talked to three different realtors and they all say that the inventory is non-existent and there's multiple people that want to buy. So that's good news.
Good news.
Second issue, I was contacted last Friday morning from Philip, Mr. Philip at, Michael Philip from the Attorney General's office. He requested of me because of some scheduling issues to move the coma training to April 13th at 10:30, from 10:30 to 11:45. It's a commission day. It's a Tuesday. No fault of anybody. It's just, you know, people get busy. So they're going to change, change that to the April 13th date. And that's why it was taken off today's commission agenda.
Very good.
I will have more information for you all on some road issues that we, that Ms. Holdridge and I have been working on for quite some time, but we'll have to go. And hopefully we don't, but there's more, more likely than not, we'll have to go in the executive session next week for a good, probably 20 to 30 minutes to discuss one parcel that probably, you know, there's a good chance it's going to lead to litigation. So it's unfortunate, but it happens. I'm hoping we can resolve it prior to that, but it's complicated. So just let you all know that that's coming down the pipe. And I'll get it on the agenda if, if we need to.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment.
Red light means it's on? Okay.
You might want to move it down.
Okay, all right. Just a couple of things. You've already talked about the turbine map. Just to be clear, where, do you have an idea exactly where, other than just saying in the hallway? Got an, anybody got an idea, Kendall? Do you have an idea of exactly where at this point? Okay.
Well.
I just want everybody to know, the public to know.
Yeah, we'll get a, we'll get a, we should maybe put one out in the hallway out here, or we could put one on the wall in here so that people have access to it. But I think Eric literally just, I met with him yesterday morning on the road use agreement. I think he literally got the map yesterday.
He did. I got an email.
Yeah.
About the same time. Very hard to read on my phone.
Oh, they're terrible to read on your phone. Yeah, Jeff Spangler blessed me with several, 11 by 17. So, anyway. And I've gotten those pretty much passed out. Shoot, where did my other one go? Oh, this map. It puzzles me. This is a 1989 map. So after everything is done and caught up and taken care of, is the hope that we have like a 2021 real map? Is that the objective here?
Yes, a three year process. And we're very hopeful in the near future that we will have a, a accurate map that we've been looking for, for that.
Okay, awesome. That's all I need to know. I just wanted to, you know, for sure.
We found a permanent home for, for someone to be in charge of all updates on those maps.
Yes, awesome. Okay, that's all I need to know. That's, that's.
And, and to follow up, you know, we still do have icon gremlins. We still have.
Oh, yes. Yes, and I heard that. I just never did hear for sure that we actually hope to have a, a, a new.
Oh, I think, I think Mr. Harris, Mr. Bailey, I mean, Chairman, I mean, they, we have been wanting this process done for a long time.
Okay, no, and I, and I see the progress and I appreciate that. So thank you.
And I'm glad, another thing too, just why I got up here, the sewer district contract, I did talk to Nancy this morning. The city with their new city attorney, I'm hoping that we can, we were hoping to have at the end of March. Susan and I did talk yesterday. There's some meetings that are still occurring on the city's end. So we're hoping to have that new contract to present to the commission, you know, in the coming weeks. So we're delayed a little bit, but we're hopefully going to be back on track. So.
Back to the maps, just for a real quick minute. This, this process started with looking at everything from 1950 forward. So it's, you know, it's been a real, real challenge for, for Laura. Okay? Anyone else? Very good. I would enter. Okay, commissioners, entertain your comments.
You got anything? I've got, this is a small item. This is a campaign item as well, what I saw on Facebook this week. There was some numbers put on there that was a result of a ball tournament at La Roche Park that contributed over $200,000 to the local economy for that tournament. Now, I go to a lot of ball tournaments because I've got two grandsons that's very busy. I want to go forward as a citizen. I have this dream of having tournaments out here with two or three more diamonds. Now, I know that could be expensive. I'd like to meet with the city and the school board just to talk about that. The possible, I think, we've got to think out of the box, economic development wise. Those ball tournaments, every weekend's a big deal. And I want to move forward with that because it'd be expensive, but you know, county, city can do all the dirt works, things like that. I'm not trying to commit the county to anything, but I just want you to know as a citizen or as commissioner.
One, just real quick, one of the things that we were looking at is exactly that. In the future, and that would be tasked in my mind to, when we do have our economic development person on board, to start the granting process to get, get that.
Right.
Dream into, into reality. And, and looking at the map, we're hopeful that there's, there's, there's areas out there that would support two more diamonds.
Early, early, early April, you'll be, by contract, you'll be receiving your pilot money. And so I think at some point, you know, maybe next week, you might want to put something on the agenda about talking about what that pilot money looks like. I mean, I think quality of life to me is a.
Yes.
Is, is one of the three legs of the stool that helps people, you know, obviously lowering taxes and then infrastructure. I mean, I'm, wouldn't be for any, you know, salary increases or anything of that nature. I think ball diamonds trails, public spaces, parks, water pads, things like that are right on point with what that money should be used for.
If memory serves me correctly, the first payment is somewhere around $405,000. So, so you know.
Great seed money for a ballpark.
Be great, great seed money, but you know, it's also, there's other entities out there that have some dreams in their small towns that wants, wants some economic development in their area.
And I agree with all that. I think that's great. But maybe in April, someone's going to have to take charge of this and start moving things down the path. And I'll do that as a citizen or county commissioner or as a group. There's something that's going to take a year or two to develop, but it, we can't get done until we start. So that's all I have. So.
I just say, speaking of, I mean, Justin mentioned lowering taxes. I've had quite a few text messages on evaluations that came out recently, and people's taxes have gone up. And I, I would like the public to know that I'm very aware of that because I pay taxes myself. And we as commissioners need to figure that out. We either need to lower the mill levy or do something. So.
I agree 100%.
I'm very aware of that. Just want to put that on record. And it is on my mind.
Great.
You know, certainly with the new budget process coming up, that we can address it then, of course, but.
Yeah, there's, there's some, there's some bills, there's some legislation that's coming down. We'll see how the, I talked to Jay at KAC yesterday. There's some legislation that could have an impact on how the process works with property taxes and the mill levy. We'll, we'll track those. You know, obviously, raising the valuation has been a goal of this commission and this prior, prior commission. You know, obviously, if the valuation goes up, the commission has every ability to lower the, lower the mill. Obviously, there's a lot of different opinions about that, you know, from, I bet Susan has her opinion, Terry Sizer has his opinion. So you got to, you know, there's a lot, lot to think about. And so I think maybe it is time to have that discussion sooner than later. I think that with the pilot money coming and possibly with the increased evaluation, that some discussions need to be had of what it looks like five years from now. You know, obviously, the prior commission to this one made a goal of trying to decrease the mill, 13 mills, you know, within a 15 year period. You know, we've already decreased it some. You know, it might be the opportunity to look at next year's budget cycle with what's coming up, which also is happening too. So. And, and also the next, another thing on the agenda for next week will be a discussion about the, the monthly county health board. We'll get that on the agenda too. We've had, we've had a couple of discussions there and we're going to need to know kind of what the commission's thinking there too. So there's, there's just, it, it, it's time for a good old fashioned banter session, sit down and actually see what it looks like five years from now. And we're going to need some.
The budget season this year is going to be a lot different than it has in the past with, with everything that's coming in. And, you know, what demands we have and.
But you got a lot.
Looking forward to seeing what the, what the, our.
We have some really, we have some really good people in place now too that's going to be able to help us with analyzing our health insurance. You know, there's, did a bad taping job. But anyway, just processes. I mean, I think it's time to have maybe put 30 minutes or even an hour on the agenda next week. We can even do in the afternoon, just having a discussion about some future planning. I think the two new commissioners have got their feet wet now. So we could have, have something we've needed, we've needed to do, we haven't done in a while. I really haven't. Just having a, a talk about what it looks like because quality of life, lowering property taxes and helping infrastructure is something that needs to be done all across rural America. And what better time than now than maybe have that conversation? So. And we'll get something more permanent. Shane's already texted me. He's got an idea.
He's got an idea.
Yeah, well, better tape and more engineering skills than I have. So.
And Clifton, thank you for bringing that up because I think all commissioners are supporting their lowering taxes.
You bet. Yeah, we voted last year and I'm, I'm very, very aware that I want to, that we want to lower them again this year.
We will work very hard to address that and lower taxes. That's what.
I don't have anything. So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn for the day.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to have just a little discussion. Something we, we could do in the future, and I've been getting calls on this. We certainly can't fulfill the agenda till noon, but I get a lot of requests, questions, why don't we stay till noon? Because we do leave early, but I don't know if it makes any difference to the public or not, except the six I've talked to. I don't know about the rest of them. So I don't know if there's any purpose. Justin, you got any input staying till noon on Tuesdays at least?
Yeah, I think.
I'm not staying till noon.
I think, you know, obviously, my time as county councilor, our meetings have changed dramatically. I mean, I would use that word dramatic because they have. And when we first started, we met on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Tuesdays were, usually the mornings were a lot like this. You know, then Tuesday afternoons was mostly a conversation, talking about things. And then Thursday, it was a lot of sitting and just having discussions. So I mean, Thursdays, I don't think were that beneficial. I think what, I think the Anne's probably learned this over the years is that there's a lot of things that happen to keep a organization like this going. You know, I'm not saying behind the scenes because, you know, obviously we're in transparency, but there's a lot of work that's going on. And we're trying to present that to the commission as, as we can, but we got a lot of things that are percolating in the back. So we could absolutely have, you know, those times. And really, I think you could make that hour like from 10:30 to 11:30 every Tuesday and have those types of conversations again. You know, pick a certain topic to go over with, like healthcare one week or infrastructure the next week or quality of life the next week, just to have different topics.
As long as we have a topic, have it just some set here.
Yeah, it can't. Yeah, I agree. I agree. It has to be taught because.
Watch each other.
Yeah, the way, the way that the agendas are set up now, there's no way to really just sit around and talk about stuff because you want to make sure that the public can have their comment period. And the way that we've set up our meetings now, they're going to be faster just because we're following an agenda and we're keeping to it and we're not. We don't, obviously don't want to make anyone upset. And we're, we're trying to follow the best practices when it comes to an agenda. And I still think you can have those times, but you need to put on what the topic's going to be. How long are you going to have the discussion for?
Okay. I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'm part of that discussion, Clifton.